It's more professional.
They want us down.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Everybody's ready? Okay, it's time. Good evening, everybody. This is Katie Catchman at 7:15 on September 28th, 2022. And I now call the committee of the whole. All right, open the tree of the room. We'll start with the roll call. Ellis?
Here.
Here. Francie?
Here.
Gaken?
Here.
Catchman? Here. Mackey?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Peratini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Cedar?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you. And I do acknowledge that we have a lot of people in the audience here tonight for inter chief green. And if we are going to move it up on the agenda, but it has to be part of the regular council meeting. So first during committee of the whole, we will breeze through this as quickly as possible. We do have John Snyder here with Cascade Natural Gas, and he's joining us on Zoom. Hi, John, can you hear us?
Loud and clear.
Perfect. Well, I will give the floor to you, and you should be able to share your screen if you have a deck.
Yeah, okay, let's see, share screen. Can you see that?
Nope.
Is that visible to you?
No, we can't see it yet.
Might be a little bit of delay or.
Did we give you the ability to share?
How about that?
Okay, now we got it.
Okay, yeah, there was like 20 different options, so I wasn't sure what to use. So, okay, are you guys ready? You can hear me? Okay, yeah, so I'm John Snyder from Cascade Natural Gas Company and as well as IGC. And it's a pleasure to, and I thank you for having me present today and give you a little bit more insight on this project. Present it, so this is related to the Aberdeen Natural Gas System Reinforcement. It's also known as the Bassett Boulevard and Eight Inch Steel Pipeline Project. I hope I'm saying Bassett. There's been confusion if it's Besseit or Bassett or Bossage, but I've heard it was Bassett. Anyway, that's a moot point. So let's get into the details on what we're, you know, the what, when, where, and why we're doing this. So overview, it's about 18,000 feet of eight inch steel pipeline that we're being, want to install. Of that 18,000 feet, about 3,700 feet will be horizontally directly drilled. In layman's terms, if you're not familiar with that, that's boring or trenchless installation. And I'll get into some of those segments and why we're doing, taking that approach. 720 feet of six inch steel, which will be the outlet piping to our above ground regulator station, which is related to the memorandum of understanding. That's, I think that's part of the council decision today, so it's related to that. And there's, I think there's one other item related to the easement. So moving forward, let's go ahead and give you a visual representation of what we're doing. We're gonna be installing from, excuse me, getting all recalled here, but Wishka and North B Street. That's where we're gonna be starting the project. That's the end of our high pressure supply line system. And then basically, right there, there's an opportunity to run directional bore. That's the largest one. We do have two private property easements acquired already at this point. After the private property easements, as you move west, that's when we run into the city of Aberdeen, private property, which will, you know, we're proposing an easement there. And I think that's part of what's on the agenda today to vote on that. After, after that, we, the yellow line you see is all open trench piping. And that moves along, of course, I don't know if you've seen the cursor, but moves along here. And then we try to avoid as much residential area as possible. But unfortunately, you know, we did have to, you know, go through some residential area on Bel Air, starting on Bel Air. I'm sorry, did I hear something? I'm sorry, I hear some background noise, but yeah, so we do have traffic control set up, so we will not be blocking the streets, and we will be providing access to residents to be able to, you know, exit and leave their property and obviously return to their properties well. And then we returned to Bat, Besseit Boulevard, which is the majority of our, you know, footage. And that's where we have our second bore. And the reason we have that is you're probably all familiar with the historic landslide that happened there. There's been extensive geotechnical research that we've done through multiple companies and our boring HDD horizontal directional drill company. So we've, we've made sure that we mitigated, we're not gonna, you know, exacerbate any problems there. We're gonna go well under that and not, you know, compromise any stability concerns there. Then the project continues towards Oak Street, where we're gonna be boring down here. And that's purely just to get under a lot of utilities, there's sewer lines and so on and so forth. So that's just the constructibility issue. Ultimately, that 150 pound system, which we're tying in, you know, near the February reservoir, is gonna go to this regular station site where we regulate down from 150 pounds MEOP to 60 pound MEOP, which typically runs from 50 to 55 pounds in the entire distribution system in the city of Aberdeen and, you know, the local nearby communities. So what's driving this project, you might ask? We foresee low system pressures. We have seen, you know, some system, low system pressures due to increased residential development, but a lot from commercial and industrial. And the problem with the system, you know, it's a little bit outdated. So you can see our high pressure supply line comes from the northeast of the system. And basically, our regular station, which regulates it down, like I said, to 55, 60, you know, 50, 55 pounds, is, is not located at ideal location. It's at the far northeast part of our system. So. So by the time, you know, you have, you're holding 50, 55 pounds here. By the time you get to the south and west end of the town, given the demand on the system, the pressure diminishes dramatically and exponentially. So I'll get into what this looks like on a design day model in a cold weather event. So this is our design model, and it shows, you know, a cold weather event, where we called our design day, heating design, design day, heat in degree design day to be perfectly complete there. So the red dots you see here are what you call outages. So if you look at them, it's very hard to see, but zero, less than zero is the red. So you have outage in all of Hoquim. And then a good portion of Aberdeen. And one notable fact, there's the West, the West Grace Harbor. Not West Grace Harbor, West, I think it's the hospital, the west side, I forgot what it's called, West Grace Harbor Hospital, I believe, that results in an outage. And then some of these orange points here in the middle of the city are, you know, a little bit above five pounds, maybe up to like 15. But that doesn't result in adequate pressure to supply certain type of equipment. So it's critical that, you know, we take action. And so really what we're trying to do here to, you know, solve this is create a new centralized supply. You know, I said that the system ends over here at that, that gas supply point, a regular station. Like I said, I showed you that, that pipeline route, move the pipeline all the way to the center of the town, create a new supply point, point, so that it's centralized in the town, and it can equally disperse the pressures throughout the system so that we can basically satisfy all of our customers, not just the ones, you know, that are closer to the supply point. So from modeling perspective, this is what this looks like after we introduce the supply point. So you saw all those red points, you know, over toward Hoquim, which are the most severe. You can see the blue dots are from 30 to 60 pounds. So we're really happy there. From a gas design standpoint, this is a, you know, major improvement. The Graves Harbor Hospital, you can see, has 42 pounds before it was, you know, well below zero. Or just an analogy, it's not a real number. And so this allows for the existing system to endure a cold, a cold event, cold weather event, as well as allow for additional expansion to a commercial, residential, and industrial. So what we're trying to accomplish here, kind of already touched on this, healthy system pressures to all customers at all times. It reduces the risk to losing critical customers, not, maybe not only Grace House, Grace Harbor Hospital, but other ones that, you know, I'm not aware about at this time. And it provides a secondary supply to minimize outages. Basically, just gives more cards in our deck so that we have more options. Let's say there's an earthquake, we were able to have more redundancy in our system. So we won't impact as many people when we need to close valves and, and, you know, do these shutdowns. Of course, if it's in a severe situation, we shut down all supplies, but usually it's more localized. So it allows us a little bit more robust system to, to make those decisions. If you're not aware, the residential, commercial, industrial expansion, we've had to deny, deny a lot of customers new service because we're out of capacity, and we have to reserve our capacity to those core customers. So, you know, residential, most importantly, and then small commercial, large, existing large customers have been in nice equipment expansion. One that you might know of is Renewable Energy Group, which supplies bio, bioenergy, renewable bioenergy. And they have phase two and phase three, so it's been on hold because we don't have any capacity. So it's kind of hinging upon this project for them to increase the demand. Among another project, which is beyond the scope of here, but this, this will be a good start for them to start, you know, hiring more people and increasing their demand and bringing more jobs to the city of Aberdeen as well. That's a win-win. And it also allows for gas service inquiries made near the port. Where, where that regular station is, we're gonna be extending that eight inch main and stubbing it out just in the event that the port needs more gas. And that's something that we've had to, like I mentioned before, denying in the past, and now it's gonna be a possibility. So I think this is a very important, and it offers, you know, a future expansion and possibilities in the city of Aberdeen. Is, okay, next slide, as far as timing. We're actually looking to go March 2023, next year, 2023, and to July, that could shift depending on whether. That's our target at this point. If we start in March, we probably could finish by June. And then it mitigates a lot of the problems, you know, doing this work in the winter when we have adverse weather conditions that really makes it a lot more difficult constructability wise. So with that, I just wanted to open up with questions on our project or any other concerns that you may have.
John, thank you. I don't think that council realized the, the issues and the capacity that you're working through, so we appreciate that. And I believe that there are a couple of questions from council, so councilperson Ellis?
Thank you, John, for my life, okay. Thank you, John, for being available for questions and giving us a little bit more information about this project. It does look like it's going to impact some residential areas. And I'm wondering what the, how you design for having the gas shut off if there is an earthquake event or if there's a breach of the pipe through any other means? Does that happen automatically?
Unfortunately, the, the system is, is so well intertwined. You know, automatic shut off valves, yes, are great, and it's been implemented in our company for transmission lines. But in the situation where you have interconnected pipe systems, it's, it's, you know, it's like a rat's nest of pipelines in it, to put it in layman's terms. So it's all dependent upon this particular situation. But we do have tabletop exercises where we look at situations, you know, throughout the company, and it, it makes us more aware on how we can respond to these events. And one thing that we do have is emergency shutdown sections identified in our GIS department, GIS system. So we can quickly identify where we need to isolate certain sections on the system. Just in the event it's localized, if, if it's a world, you know, a huge earthquake, and obviously everything's blowing, we would shut down the main source of supply just for public safety and that. But like I said, you know, it all depends on what's, you know, where, what the situation is, where it is, what valves we have available, and we do have, we have that mapped out, and we, and we're actually revising that on a yearly basis. Actually, right now, we're revising our emergency shutdown plan section, sections at this moment. And I must say that we, you know, people, we have on-call personnel. So if this happens, they can dispatch, they can be dispatched very, you know, expect, very quickly to the site. And we can make a quick, you know, a quick, but, you know, obviously educated decision to isolate that section so that we're not impacting the public, and, but we're doing it in a safe, a safe way so that we're, you know, mitigating the ultimate danger, which is, you know, gas blown into the atmosphere. That's obviously paramount to, you know, losing customers. But we, we take both, we consider both, both things.
Would you say that this will expand your system 25%?
25%?
Yeah, 40%.
Well, as I showed in, in some of those, those modeling scenarios.
Yeah.
We were in a cold weather event, it was very severe. So that, that was in even the cold, you know, that was negative 40 pounds, which is not feasible, but it's, it's pretty severe. So, I mean, it could be a lot less severe of a cold weather event, and we can lose a lot, a lot more customers. So it, by expanding 25%, no, I think it's more to the, to the factor of, I would say, I mean, I'm just putting a number on here, it's, it's 100, it's at least two or three times the capacity that we can provide right now. Just because of the location that we have it and the, some of the future projects we have in the woodworks upstream of that to support some more industrial customers that, that have been inquiring about it. So it's, it's, I think it's, it's pretty huge, and I'm not overstating that. It is dramatic.
And one last question, if I can. So at the state level and even at the national level, there's a lot of concern about greenhouse gases and rising CO2 levels. You're looking at expanding two to three times the amount of natural gas coming into our area. What are you doing to mitigate that? And will Aberdeen see some of those mitigation efforts? What do you have in mind for that?
I'm sorry, I was having a little hard time hearing you.
I'll, I'll try again, thank you. So by bringing more natural gas to our area, what, what will Cascade Natural Gas be doing to mitigate or offset the added carbon footprint that you're bringing here? And will the city of Aberdeen actually get some help in terms of offsetting carbon emissions?
Well, currently, the company is actively invested in renewable natural gas. And one of those is obviously not renewable, it's natural gas, but REG is, is a, a leading firm in, in renewable biofuels. But what we're doing now and what, and we're really invested in renewable natural gas from cow, obviously dairy farms, and making, trying to get at a certain point, I don't know exact target, but to implement most of our natural gas from these renewable natural, you know, the, basically the dairy farms to get into our system. And we're developing goals to try to get that more as an objective into our company. I, I work, you know, a lot in Twin Falls, and I have a lot of projects in Washington where these renewable natural gas facilities, I have three or four projects where we're implementing that, and actually, a lot of them are moving forward to construction very soon, we're sending contracts. So if, if that helps, that's, that's one aspect of it. There's also hydrogen wind power. Where wind power, you know, obviously during certain times of the day, wind power, when it dwindles out, it just gets wasted, right? Because you don't, you can't produce it. So there's something called power to gas, where the, the excess wind power that can't go into the grid goes into, into an electrolysis process, and it turns the water into gas, hydrogen gas, it's stored for a later time. So we're not wasting, you know, wind power. It's a lot of times, yeah, we talk about batteries, yeah, that's a possibility. But I think in, you know, in research and many AGA studies, it's more efficient to convert that to hydrogen and pipelines, and then use that as, you know, to convert into fuel cells. So there's a lot of emerging technologies that Cascade Natural Gas, as well as IGC, MDU are invested in. And we're, we're all on board on that and doing our part to create a more green, you know, environment. And I can't speak to all of that because I'm not in that department. But this is a lot that I've heard that we're, we're on board with, with helping out with the environment and, and working with these new emerging technologies.
Well, I'd love to see more help to our community here. We have a lot of homes that need insulating and could use some, some help there. Maybe you can offer some of that to your customers.
Council personnel, is it okay to open it up to anyone else that might have questions? Okay, this is an item on the agenda tonight. So if there are other council members with questions, now would be a great time to ask them. And feel free to ask, I can't see in front of behind you clearly.
Is, is, are the questions basically to understand the project better?
Yes.
And is the council then gonna vote on approving like the easement?
Yes.
And if I have questions regarding the easement, do I ask that now or?
If you think it's a question for Cascade, then you can ask it now. If you think it's something that city staff can handle, you can ask it.
I think it's for city staff.
Okay, yeah, you can hold it for CD.
During the Public Works Committee meeting, we asked you about the dispatcher and the emergency shut off system and the location of where they reside at and the, and the timing it would take for them to get from their home to the emergency shut off. And the location you gave us was, refresh my memory, was it Elma or McLaren?
Well, Elma, we've moved from, or at least the District of Aberdeen, main base has moved to Elma. But of course, there's employees living elsewhere. That, I mean, the base, you know, was over in Aberdeen, so they, they do have, I think, some employees that still reside over in that area. And they can be quickly dispatched from multiple locations. You know, Elma's 20 minutes away from, you know, the base where our original, you know, antiquated base over in Aberdeen. But, you know, we have employees not, they all live in Elma. So the response time can be, you know, as quick as possible. And I'm sure they, they would, you know, expedite people from, from a local, you know, localized to the, the, the emergency situation, whatever it be. So if that answers your question.
It does, almost. I would just like to see a more specific number of how long the response time would be in that type of situation, is we have an idea of exactly what, how it would be approached. Just for my, it's been on my mind since, since we spoke, why, because the original number given to me was 10 minutes. And I understand there was a, a station as well in Aberdeen, because when you said Elma, the 10 minutes number, I kind of just got a little off put by how, how they would get from Elma to Aberdeen in that amount in 10 minutes. So just clarify a little bit for me, if there is a, there is people here in town. But I would like to know a specific game plan in that situation, is how exactly where they'd be dispatched from, who would be dispatched, and how long would it take them to get in that emergency situation?
Right, and it all depends on, you know, who's available at that time, where they're located. I mean, of course, people's, you know, take vacation here and there, but there's always an on-call personnel. That person might be in Elma, they might be in Aberdeen. It just depends on that week, but we have on-call personnel. And even if, a lot of people that aren't on-call are willing to help. So, I mean, I mean, it's a great company, and then everybody's, has each other's back. So even if they're not on-call, they might get a call, you know, if they're more local and they're willing to help. I've seen that personally throughout the, the company.
Other questions from council members this evening? Seeing none. John, thank you so much for joining us and for providing this presentation tonight.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, and, you know, I hope that answers some of your questions that you might have. And feel free to reach, reach out to me anytime.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is department head updates. Do we have any updates from department heads this evening?
Dr. Seals coming up.
I just wanted to.
Microphone.
We can't hear you.
Can you speak into the microphone a little better?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sent a lot of documents out for the revenue projections. The one that I wanted to point out for tonight is the, the public hearing, the PowerPoint, has some analytical information, some graphs. And if council has any questions now or later, I'm open to any questions. And we will be sure to post this with the minutes, so the public can see it's awesome. Thank you. Any other department head updates this evening? Seeing none. The mayor's report, I'll hand it over to you, Mayor Shave.
Thanks, I don't think I have anything tonight.
Okay, you have stuff later on. So we will move on to non-standing committee reports. Any updates from council members on other committees that they're serving on? Okay, we're rolling right through. I'll adjourn the committee of the whole, hand it over to the mayor.
Thank you. This is Mayor Shave, and it is Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, at 7:45 PM. And I call the Aberdeen City Council Meeting to order. First item is the roll call. Empty clerk, will you please take the roll call?
Ellis?
Here.
Francie?
Here.
Gaken? Catchman?
Here.
There's a wire somewhere.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Peratini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Cedar?
Here.
Taylor? Taylor?
Here.
Shay?
Here.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. Ms. Morrison, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move, we approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion was made seconded to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions?
Mayor Shave?
Yes.
I'm just going to ask that we move item B1 under special agenda items to occur after the first public comment.
Okay.
I second it.
Motion was made seconded to move an item on the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. Agenda items.
I'd like to speak. My name is Nancy Kyle. I'm a graduate of Weatherwax High School, second generation worker at the Aberdeen Armory Museum. And I'm currently commuting from Summit Lake to service the treasure of the Friends of the Aberdeen Museum and work at your city warehouse on your collection one day a week. The Friends noted that over 8.6 million was moved into the museum fund in November of 2019. The next month, it was gone without offsetting expenditures. So we assume that money went to the general fund. Insurance is meant to replace a loss. And it is legally true that you don't have to do that. The city could spend the insurance money in any way they wanted, but I feel it's not ethical or moral. We ask that the city, well, we believe that the city has a responsibility to preserve and display the artifacts that your citizens in this community have given to you in trust. And they're continuing to give them every day. We ask that you give the public a building that is structurally suitable to house a museum, spend what is needed to make the museum whole.
Welcome, Mayor Shave and the members of council. My name is Steve Schumate and I reside in Monticello, Washington. And I am a recently retired chief of police for the city of Aberdeen. For those who don't know, I just.
I thought I recognized you.
Yes. In fact, I did like my dress up clown shirt for the night, but it's a little warm. So I just want to speak briefly with respect to acting chief Dale Green. And I enthusiastically endorse him for the permanent position. I will tell you, I've known Dale for his entire career. And of course, I think most know that he started with the Los Angeles Police Explorer Program and made his way up through the ranks. When I came on in 2018, he was a lieutenant for the city of Aberdeen. And obviously, the next four years, I got to know him better. And he exceeded my expectations. When he was promoted to commander, he exceeded my expectations. He was somebody that was just driven to always do what was best for the city of Aberdeen and the Aberdeen Police Department. His recent attendance to the FBI National Academy, he excelled at that. And while I wish the agency would have been accredited prior to my retirement, he along with his leadership team was able to get the agency. And that was four years in the making, but we are, we, the city of Aberdeen and the Aberdeen Police Department has now had an accredited police department. And that is a huge undertaking for sure. And Dale, in no small part, was responsible for that. So I just want to share, the city of Aberdeen would be blessed to have Dale Green as the permanent chief of police. For cities that are small and medium size in the state of Washington, there is a very limited candidate pool for police chiefs, again, in our state for various reasons. And so I'm just excited to see Dale and hopefully this council supports that as well and moving the agency forward in a very positive direction to better serve the citizens of Aberdeen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on agenda items?
I just wanted to add a couple of comments to the presentation you got.
Could you state your name? Oh, address?
7105 Broadway Drive, Central Park. I keep stating his address. Anyways, to add to the conversation about the natural gas, I've been involved in the Cascadia earthquake issues and drills. And in that, every bridge in Graceover County is going to fail. So if their shut off team is stationed in Elma, they're not going to get here to Aberdeen.
They're not. He said they have employees in Aberdeen as well.
But still with bridges and everything. So I just want to add that to the conversation.
We.
Also, remember that the legislature passed the Clean Energy Bill and they're going to ban natural gas in 2030. So you need to be preparing for what's going to happen down the road. So just some food for thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. We can move up to special agenda items. A report one.
All right. We have a report from personnel and the human resources director recommending that the city council adopt the recommendation of promoting interim police chief Dale Green to chief of police effective October 1st, 2022. I move, we accept this report.
Second. Motion was made seconded to accept this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The report is adopted. Pro-Tam Police Chief Dale Green, would you come up front with your, would you become?
Got to make you go up front so everybody can hear.
Yeah, I'd really like to use that attention.
So raise your right hand. I, Dale Green.
I, Dale Green.
You solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
Bide by the code.
Bide by the code.
Standards of ethical conduct and policy adopted by the Aberdeen police.
Standards of ethical conduct adopted by, and policies adopted by the Aberdeen police.
And that I will faithfully and harshly.
And that I will faithfully and harshly.
Perform and discharge the duties of a police chief.
That I will faithfully and harshly perform the duties of a police chief.
For the city of Aberdeen to the best of my ability.
For the city of Aberdeen to the best of my ability.
Dale Green, you are now the Aberdeen City Police Chief.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. This is very quick. I know this is a very big meeting. I am incredibly honored and privileged to be up here. I tried to keep it together, but I think I cried on my last promotion too. So I'll try to be quick. I certainly have some incredibly big shoes to fill. I'm so thankful for all the people that I'm lucky to work with every single day. Just an amazing group of people. My family who showed up today and my friends, I think they thought this was a swearing ass ceremony and I was swearing in. And certainly all the citizens that I have had the privilege to serve for the last 25 years.
You may give this one to you.
Thank you very much. And I'm incredibly excited with this opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Did we want to move forward?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we back up to Finance Committee. Committee Chair report.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee, that's you please. And we were given copies of the revenue, revenue, uh, plan, revenue for 2023. And had some lively discussion around our reports. This is the date. Oh, wait a minute, back up. Like to go ahead and move that we approved expenditures.
Motion was made seconded to approve the expenditures. Any discussion? And payroll? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
A motion to approve accounts payable in a total amount of $382,801.71 and payroll in a total amount of $87,401.63. Check numbers 25597 through 25623, 78930 through 79057 with no wires. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Perchini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, today is the date of the public hearing on the revenue sources for the 2023 budget. I move, we open the hearing.
I second it.
Motion was made seconded to the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. If anyone from the public has anything to say about the revenue sources for the 2023 budget, the public hearing is now open. Seeing none?
I move, we close the hearing. I second it.
Motion was made seconded to close public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have a report from finance and finance director recommending that the city council accept the recommendation of uncommitting $7 million from the Gateway Center project and change it to uncommitted and unfunded cash in the general fund. The finance committee moves at this report be adopted.
I second it.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Shaw.
I would just want to say that I'm not, I don't like the uncommitted and unfunded part. I think my preference would be to see committed to capital projects of some sort.
I would agree with that.
Anyone else for discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The report is adopted.
And we have a report from finance and finance director recommending that the city council hold a public hearing and approve the sources of revenue provided previously creating the 2023 budget for preliminary final budget to be presented on October 26, 2022. I move, we adopt this report. I second it.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, under discussion.
I'm a little confused. Isn't that what we just did?
We had a public hearing.
Okay. And now we have a report that says we were going to do that. We did it. Seems a little backwards, but.
Agreed. Definitely was backwards, yes.
Is there any other discussion on this report? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Public Works Committee Chair Report, Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works met yesterday. And just to clarify, I'd like to revisit real quickly something that Mr. Snyder said that I think we didn't come across very clearly. I under, some of the response time would be to isolated instances, should there be an event in town. I understood him to say that if there was a cataclysmic event, they would just chop it off at the source. So they wouldn't be sending people to Aberdeen in a cascade event to run around trying to put out fires. They would just stop it all coming here, period. So I just wanted to clarify that because it sounded like some of the questions, maybe that wasn't understood. So moving on.
I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Shaw, because it was my understanding in an event of that nature, it's automated. They cut it off at the main.
That that would be, I don't know that it's automated, but that is their plan in the event that it would just, they would just stop sending anything to us at all, period.
Yeah. Thank you.
So under Reports and Communications, we have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending the city council authorize execution of the memorandum of understanding with Cascade Natural Gas clarifying the existing franchise agreement approved by ordinance number 6124. I move, we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Ellis.
I think given the fact that we don't have very good information about how Cascade Natural Gas will respond to a breach in their pipeline, short of it being had in place, I'd like us to table this until we do have more information on that, as well as in light of natural gas being phased out by 2030, 35, how, how they are going to implement that phase out and what does that mean for this pipeline running through our city? So I, I move to amend the report.
No.
To table the report? Set it back to committee?
Motion was made seconded to table this report. When would you like it tabled to?
Discussion?
Under discussion.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. It's my understanding that a motion to table is not debatable.
You have to put a, you're supposed to put a time on it. Table it till when?
Actually, Mayor, point of order under tabled event is due to be returned. If it's not brought up at the next meeting, it dies. Unless a date is put on it. We don't have to put a date on it.
Okay. I knew there was some connection. Okay, all in favor of table in this item, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone, all opposed to table in this? Say nay.
No.
The noes have it. So moving forward with this report.
There's been a motion and a second.
There was a motion and a second. So all in favor of this report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay, Councilmember Shaw?
Item number three, we, no, item number two, we have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending the city council authorize the mayor to execute the agreement for the natural gas pipeline easement with Cascade Natural Gas. I move, we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion?
I have some questions. I have some questions.
Captain, go ahead.
And this might be for Patricia Sewell to address or someone involved in the city's behalf of negotiating the easement. Can you answer quickly, how much is the compensation to the city from natural gas for the pipeline easement? And how was that compensation determined? What formula was based on?
Thank you.
I don't know if you saw me getting up. My name is Nick Bird, I'm the city engineer. I actually was the one that was facilitating that, that coordination. The amount of compensation shown in the agreement is $10 and other good and valuable consideration. It's a generalized term, but the intent is actually just $10. The driving factor behind that is the community benefit that this, this provides to our citizens. So that was, that was the thought process behind it. Now, there is an option that we can go back and very similar to what we do on our vacations, which is something that we did consider, is half of the assessed value, which would, I want to say ultimately result in a, an easement value of, I want to say ballpark around $10,000. And so you're right, there's, there is a difference there, you know, but at the end of the day, I made the gut call, you know, moving forward with $10 because of the community benefit that the project provides. Now, at the end of the day, if, if there is a desire to make that adjustment, that's council's decision.
So just a couple of questions for clarification. So the city did not go through a process of ordering an appraisal of its affected right of way and what an easement compensation from that appraisal would determine?
In this case, no.
Okay. And is it customary for the city, for large utility users like this, not to require that they compensate for placing utilities within city right of way?
The.
I can answer that and say we have done it in the past. And also, some of the questions Councilmember Seedorf is asking were shared with the Public Works Committee, and we brought this report to the council with the full knowledge, knowing of the decision made at the staff level to grant the easement in the way it's presented tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilmember Ellis.
I think just because we've given utilities free access essentially to our rights of way in the past, doesn't mean that that's the practice we should be going forward with. Yes, having greater gas capacity will help certain businesses to expand and provide better gas service to residents, to utilize gas. But, but there, that comes at a cost. And Aberdeen, like many other cities, is going to have to report carbon, or carbon footprint when we're applying for grants. And, and where will Cascade Natural Gas be then? I, I would like to see us go the route where we get that $10,000 and we use that at the very least if Cascade Natural Gas is going to help us plant more trees or, or weatherize homes in our area. The city put that to use, offsetting the carbon costs of this project.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Councilmember Shaw?
We have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending the council authorize the mayor to sign and approve the joint resolution with the City of Cosmopolis and the City of Hoquim committing support to the essential pump-related plans and projects. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So before I introduce item number four, I just want to share that four and five are kind of related. Council may remember that a few months ago, we committed some funding so that the, we could go out and get a grant and by, and then once they got that grant, then they would be eligible to proceed, proceed and try and apply for state grants to offset the local commitment. So what has happened is they're looking to repurpose that commitment and apply it to another grant. So we, they, we did it for the, we pledged, you know, $2 million to, for the Fry Creek project, but we didn't need to use that because we ended up getting other grants. And so now they want to take that commitment and apply it to a $9 million request of the federal government. And so if we get the $7 million from the feds, they'll go out and try and get the state grant to make up the difference. But it kind of just repurposes our previous commitment, if that makes any sense. So item number four, we have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending the City Council approve a resolution making up to $1,848,000 available if necessary from the insurance reserve for the Aberdeen US Highway 12 Rail Separation Project and authorizing the city engineer to act as the city's authorized agent for the 2022 RCE grant application to sign all official grant documents and to submit an application to a line of $9.24 million. I recommend that we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. So when we approved the funds for the Fry Creek pump station, that was in response to weather nature and remedy some flood concerns that Aberdeen suffers from. The flyover is necessary because of expansion at the port. And that expansion at the port is in large part coming from Ag Processing Inc., which is spending 240 to 250 million to build this additional storage at their site. The Port of Grace Harbors expected to contribute 50 million towards port expansion. 1.848 million is peanuts to those budgets. Whereas for the City of Aberdeen, where we have so many competing needs, it's a pretty big deal to set that aside. And I would like to see either Ag Processing Inc. or the Port of Grace Harbor step up and provide that grant match and not have it come from city funds.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Shaw?
So I did have that conversation with our, with our staff, and part of this is driven by timing. We have an opportunity under a project promoted by Senator Morgan Cantwell to get our hat in the rain for this funded. And there's, and the other thing is, is that it's not just big business. Whether we do the rail separation project or not, those other projects are happening and we have an obligation to, we have a problem over there in St. Louis. And this is an opportunity to go out and become eligible for $9 million that will get us to shovel ready. And once we're shovel ready, as you know, then that's when you start becoming eligible for the, as we saw with the Fry Creek project, that's when you start becoming eligible for the money that really helps put you over the top. And so it, it kind of is, we're, it's early days yet in this process, but it's, we aren't going to get there unless we do this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. The report is adopted. Councilmember Shaw, one more?
Item number five, we have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending the City Council approve a resolution rescinding Resolution 202209 and making up to $532,000 available if necessary from the insurance reserve for the Fry Creek pump station project. This amount is a reduction from the $2 million that we had previously set aside. The intent is that any money utilized by the project will be returned to the insurance reserve via a different form of, I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to resolutions. Resolution number one, a resolution supporting a joint effort with the City of Cosmopolis and the City of Hoquim committing the city personnel necessary to support the essential pump-related plans and projects. I move we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the resolution is adopted.
This will be Resolution 2022-12.
Item number two, a resolution making up to $1,848,000 available if necessary from the insurance reserve for the Aberdeen US 12 Highway Rail Separation Project and authorizing the city engineer to act as the city's authorized agent for the 2022 RCE grant application to sign all official grant documents and to submit an application to a line of $9.24 million. I recommend that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This will be Resolution 2022-13.
13, I could have guessed that. Thanks. You get there sometimes.
Item number three under resolutions, a resolution rescinding Resolution 202209 and making the lesser amount of $532,000 available if necessary from the insurance reserve for the Fry Creek pump station project. I move we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this resolution. 14. Any discussion?
It's a pretty sharp thing.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This will be Resolution 2022-14.
Mayor Shea, before I sign off for Public Works, I would just like to recognize the enormous amount of work that all of these projects represent and express appreciation to our Public Works staff for keeping these projects moving forward. So that's everything for Public Works.
Thank you very much. And that's a good point that you just made there because every one of these grants, when, if we're awarded a grant, we're not just given a check and say, here you go. We're given a rulebook about yea-thick that covers everything that we have to do in a staff, engineering staff for these kind of projects, for example, are assigned to take this on, and they have to follow this right to the letter of these rules in this book to make everything happen just exactly how it's laid out. We don't get to spend that money how we feel it works. It's designated how we spend it and how it's to be reported. So it takes a lot of staff hours just covering all this stuff. So grants are great, but, but they also bring plenty of staff time with them. So moving on to public safety, Committee Chair report. Debbie?
Thank you, Mayor Shea. So public safety met this evening at 6:30, and we don't have anything on the agenda specifically, but I'll read the reports from each department. From the Aberdeen Police Department, the Badges and Brews 2022 was a tremendous success. Hundreds of people came out and raised nearly $2,500 for the Aberdeen Police Officers Guild, Aberdeen Firefighters, and the Grace Harbor County Deputy Associations. These funds go directly to their charity accounts for the benefit of Grace Harbor children. On the personnel side for Aberdeen Police Department, they're working on background checks for two lateral applicants. They should be completed by the end of the week, and they're also conducting physical agility and oral boards for two entry-level officer candidates and two police service officer candidates next week. Officer Renninger graduated from the 17-week Basic Law Enforcement Academy next week and moves on to his 13-week Yale Training Program where he will be riding with experienced Aberdeen officers. That's the good news, we're getting more personnel in our Aberdeen Police Department. Officer Steve Gonzalez has announced his retirement after 17 years of service to APD on October 7th. Officer Gonzalez has over 25 years of total law enforcement time as well as his service in the United States Marine Corps. This retirement leaves us with 33 officers and five vacancies. The activity report for the past 30 days is 2,921 calls for an average of 97 calls per day. This is up 11% over last year at the same time. Aberdeen VIPs are in the process of updating our downtown trespass authorization forms. They are also getting ready to kick off online vacation watch and keyholder reporting information. We will have an informational release in the next two weeks with all the details as it is new, a new module for our online reporting site. And the police department has ordered the Taser 7s. They thank us for our continued support as they update and improve the necessary tools that they deploy. They are anticipating to have them delivered, and actually, they did arrive this week. And every officer will attend four hours of updated training prior to carrying these tools. So that's the good news from the Aberdeen Police Department.
Does everything have to all get tased with their new tasers?
No. No.
I heard that. Officer Stateen volunteered for that, right?
Yeah, yeah. That's public safety mean.
Who gets to shoot it?
I think everybody has the practice. And I'd like to say congratulations to Chief Green.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the City of Aberdeen Fire Department. So as you all probably know, there was a major incident, the Montesano Health and Rehab Incident, a couple of weeks ago, and the Aberdeen Fire Department participated in the response. And that occurred on Wednesday, September 14th. Their crews assisted with incident command, fire suppression efforts, and patient care and transport. The department participated in after-action reviews conducted by the Montesano Fire Department and the Grace Harbor Emergencies Management. And they did an excellent, excellent job and got everyone out safely, and it was amazing how well they all worked together. And it's just a great example of, of our area fire departments and other agencies working together. And Aberdeen Fire Department has received a donation of 200 public education kits from State Farm Insurance, and this donation will assist them in providing fire safety public education to children within Aberdeen. They put out a bid for a new ambulance, and they're due on Friday, September 30th. They will be reviewing these bids and bringing forth a recommendation to City Council at the October 12th meeting. This is something that's, was budgeted for this year, but will most likely happen in 2023. Also recognize the Badges and Brews event. It really was a great event, and I hope that you are able to attend. And the funds will be greatly used for their benevolent funds. And an RFA update, the Regional Fire Authority Planning Committee met on Thursday, September 22nd. At this meeting, the City of Cosmopolis advised that they had voted to officially join the planning efforts, so they will be a part of the proposed RFA. And the planning committee also voted to extend the date for the election to the April 2023 election to give us a little more time and do more thorough planning for that. So that's it from public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is special agenda items. We'll move to item two, since we have our new police chief already. That's great. Report, oh, down, down president, yeah.
Okay. Item number two is a report from Personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the City Council adopt the recommendation of the hiring of Ruth Clemmons as the city administrator effective immediately with an anticipated start date of October 3, 2022. I move that we accept this report.
Second, Ellis.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
I just want to request that this be a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Seeing none, uh, city clerk, deputy clerk, roll call vote, please.
So yes is accepting the report and no would be? I don't know. Ellis.
Yes.
Francie.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Catchman.
Yes.
Lawrence.
No.
Mackey.
Yes.
Morrison.
No.
D'Arcini.
No.
Ross.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Seedorf.
Yes.
Taylor.
No.
Motion passes eight to four, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report from personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the city council adopt the city administrator employee contract effective October third, two thousand twenty-two. I move we accept this report.
Okay, Ellen.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, motion, the report is adopted.
Next, we have a report from personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the city council adopt the recommendation of the advancement in paid leave schedule for eighty hours of sick leave and eighty hours of vacation leave for John Egert, wastewater treatment plant operator in training, effective September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I move we accept this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, report is adopted.
Item number five is a report from personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the city council adopt the recommendation of the advancement in paid leave schedule and longevity pay premium for eleven years and one month of service to Rebecca Ellis, Police Administrative Coordinator, effective July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. I move that we accept this report.
Second, Ellen.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Shaw.
Is the date two thousand twenty-one correct?
That's the higher date. Three hundred.
That's when she was rehired. It's, um, it's my understanding.
Retro for, to, for over a year.
That's correct.
One.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, the answer was that's correct. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, report is adopted.
Similar report, different person, is a report from personnel and the Human Resources Director recommending that the city council adopt the recommendation for the credit, uh, for years of service for Human Resources Director Danny Smith, effective January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. I move that we accept this report.
Second, Ellen.
Motion was made seconded to accept this report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The report is adopted.
Item number seven is a report from the Parks Director recommending that the city council approve the accession of the numerous items donated into the city's museum collection. I move that we accept this report.
I second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And under resolutions for special agenda items is a resolution of the city council showing support of the position of OPAC or OPAC in opposing the destruction of the chalet and keeping the chalet and the Enchanted Valley intact. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
This will be resolution two zero two two one five. And finally, we have an appointment, a reappointment, Mr. Mayor, um, for library board.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, take a motion, honor a motion to, uh, approve of Thursa Crone to the library board. Thursa's served on the library board for about five years and it's just willing to continue. So.
That, I move we accept the appointment.
I'll second.
Motion was made seconded to accept the appointment of Thursa Crone to the library board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Parks Director Barnum, was there anyone else? Uh, I was thinking you said there might be somebody else you needed appointments for.
So did you have four, you have Police Planter and Jackie Ellis from West Wester and Danny Bacon and Bobby.
Oh, for the LTACs board.
Yeah, that we're talking about.
We don't have any additional.
I didn't have any paperwork on it though. I must have.
We can, yeah, we can do it the next week. It's not time sensitive.
Okay. Sorry. So now we'll move on to public comments. Anything the public wants to comment about? Just give your name and your ward, if you know it, or where you live, and you have three minutes.
Mayor Shea, municipal city council members, my name is Jim Inklund and reside in Ward Four. I'm a member of the Friends of Aberdeen Museum Board. Thank you for allowing volunteers like me the opportunity every Tuesday to work on the museum collection that's currently housed at the Ware docks. While it is true we lost a large part of the collection to fire, it is heartening to see so many items that miraculously survived the flames. It was with great anticipation that we will soon have the adequate and appropriate space to display the collection and share with our community the rich history of Aberdeen once again. The Friends sent you a letter this week. It outlines immediate steps that can be taken to make progress toward the new Aberdeen Museum of History. And we feel our plan has strength. These ideas are suggested, suggested immediate steps in the short term. But what is lacking the last four years since the fire visited long-term plan? Over four thousand dollars a month is being spent by the city renting the warehouse with no end in sight. With the city's acquisition of the Wishthaw Salvation Army Building, or Old Sears Building, or whatever you choose to call it, uh, I have heard that the city museum advisory board has discussed just such a comprehensive plan utilizing that building. I have heard that requests have been made to the city to determine just what upgrades the building needs before the museums get moved there, but that information still is not available. That really needs to happen. Repair cost estimates are paramount to know so the museum advisory board and the, and the Friends have a member on that board can begin an informed planning process. We, collective we, everyone here, the council, the mayor, the city museum board, the Friends of the Aberdeen Museum, the entire community, all want the same thing, the reopening of the Aberdeen Museum of History. There is great strength in the unity of collaboration. We have shared some ideas, but let's work together to prepare a comprehensive plan before years in. More than enough time has passed without any, uh, action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public want to speak? Let them state your name and general location and three minutes.
Seven one zero five, Highway Drive, Central Park. I want to thank you all for passing a resolution to save the chalet. I'm ninety-nine percent sure we'll save it this year, but the future is unknown. So tonight I bring before you another resolution to save Camp Kuanas. It's on the North Shore of Lake Wauwau. Um, it's been there for generations. Um, lots of people went there as kids. There's been weddings there. There's been, uh, celebrations of all kinds. Um, our best team into the deep, deep dive of who owns it, who's been paying taxes has been completely complicated. Fortunately, I've got two great guys on my team. The latest we've come up with is the park owns the land and somebody at Ocean Shore's Kuanas has been paying taxes on the buildings. The buildings are in private ownership. And so back in ninety-two, the park went in at the dark night and burned the entire Camp Kuanas down. And public outcry fought back. Uh, local volunteers all went up and rebuilt Camp Kuanas. At the time, the park used the excuse that the little kids' feet was smothering the roots of the trees. And so far, they've stayed back. But, um, the, at the time it was burned, there was not a lot of things going on with the leadership and stuff. And so the park kind of felt that it could do this, but Park Proctor was the director of the Hoakland Y and C. He took over the leadership, set up a board. A lot of people I know went up and helped rebuild the place. It had all kinds of events up there. And then in the last years, um, his son inherited it. And so things have gotten a little lax. Um, some of the buildings are damaged. But the local Kuaan community has tried to go over and keep up the maintenance. And there's an individual has moved into the kitchen. He called the squadron and broke a window. He's been in there about three years now. And every time the park ranger goes over and tries to get rid of him, he claims he has ancestral heritage because he's related to the Higlans. And upon the many graves there is that Higley Peak. But the Higley homestead is several miles up the valley. So it's pretty doubtful he actually has any, um, descendants and heritage. But so far, he's still there. He may be, he's in the park desert, tried to go in there, but. So anyways, um, our, our organization, OPAC, along with a second crew, I wear a hat for a chairmanship of a Elk Creek Legacy Foundation that my wife and I have formed.
Ten seconds.
We reached out and we believed we were going to get it. So now another local organization wants to join us to help you guys support us with a resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Uh, Ruth Clemmons, our new city administrator.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank all of you for this honor to serve the citizens of this city, to serve each of you. And, um, what an honor. Thank you so much. I'm forward to working with each of you, um, and, and hearing and bringing your vision to fruition. So thank you so much for this opportunity. You have wonderful staff. I look forward to meeting the rest of them. So I just, thank you very much and onward and upward, Aberdeen. Thank you.
We're also looking forward to having you here at work with us and, uh, I, I know you're going to be great and do a good job for us. Uh, historically, you're Aberdeen's first ever city administrator. And I'm sure we're going to, uh, have good progress here because of your efforts and looking forward to it. So you don't even have to sit by yourself now. You can sit on the table with all the others. Just kidding. Okay. Executive session. Oh, council comment, period.
There's still more public comments.
Oh, no, I didn't realize there was more. Sorry. You're welcome to come in.
My name is, uh, John Barclay. Live at seventeen seventeen West Seventh Street, Aberdeen, um, Ward Four. It's good seeing you, W. Michelle, you're awesome. And, uh, I can't see you. I think I don't recognize most of you. Katie up there is kind of cool. Congratulations. She's, that's, that's really cool. Um, I was gonna, I was gonna come up and, and give this big tirade rant about, um, the fucking RFA because I think it's a, is a disaster and just a goddamn joke. It's failed twice and, and, but Cosmopolis running into it is just going to put a fork in it because, man, those votes are going to vote no. That's just, that's great for Cosmopolis to join that. Um, but I, I, I am, I am ashamed a lot that it's gotten this far and, and actually got to the, a third vote. Sorry, I have, I have bad bones now. Um, I'm trying to find a good way to stand. Uh, because forever and a day, we've been treating our, our firefighters like they're second-class employees. Uh, recently, there was a, a, a city employee that was on the radio and when asked what the major, um, functions of the city were, he had forgotten that we even had a fire department. I mean, I think, I know Stacy would be glad about this, but he listed parks first as essential functions of the city, right Stacy? But he didn't even get to the police. He didn't get to the roads. He didn't get to the, he didn't get to anything like that. And that's just a fucking joke if you ask.
Uh, excuse me, would you hold your language?
Oh, I apologize.
If you can't hold your language, I'm going to have you leave the premises.
I apologize. It's just my normal speech. But, uh, but I will. But it was just a joke that he had got up on the radio and forgot that we actually have a fire department. But now, I talked to one of my council people and there's a, I guess a, like a study that happened to Sixth Street. And, um, it's a pretty simple, it's a pretty simple solution because that's another thing that I came to talk about. Sixth Street is a gauntlet of horror. It's a gauntlet of horror, especially when it comes to the, the spring and autumn time when the sun is just hitting your eyes going down that street. I personally have stopped for two children, four adults, countless animals on that street because it's my direct shot to Safeway, um, over at Canyon Court. But, uh, two solutions, if there is, if this, there is a study on it that I can see. One is called grog, hey, cold grog, just get rid of grass. Everybody, some people are parking on the grass on that. Just get rid of it and let people park in it. But the easier and cheapest solution is, you people park on one side, laying out the other two, laying out the other two sides. And that calls it simple. Uh, have George go up there and tell people who are parked out of, out of the way. But, uh, it's, that's my.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. And again, I apologize for cussing. I'm just a simple nobody citizen wondering why my, uh, fire department's just ducky on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have anything they want to comment on? Okay. Council comment time. Anyone on the council have any comments? Seeing none? Move on.
I move, um, we recess and do executive session for thirty minutes. The purpose of the executive session is to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. This session will be for thirty minutes. Potential action as a result of this session is expected.
All in favor to recess to executive session, session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're recessed for thirty minutes.
Executive session is being extended for five additional minutes at this time.
Adieu, I'm early.
I'm late.
The clock's never right. Right to the minute.
About two minutes fast.
Are we good? I move we reconvene.
Motion was made seconded to reconvene from executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're reconvened. The next item on the agenda would be.
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to send a letter of intent and hire an appraisal pending acceptance of said letter of intent.
On, on potential real estate.
On potential real estate. Thank you.
I'll second that. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The ayes have it. Thank you.
I move we adjourn.
I second it.
Motion was made seconded to adjourn. If there's no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. That's a nice little, I should check in to get some more.